Uh oh, she stepped aside from it. I'll come back to her. Janice Gomes.
Here.
Christine Shay.
Here.
Peter Bramonte.
Present.
Rosemary Eva.
Here.
Okay, Adam Raposa is not here yet. And then Amanda, she was here. We'll get her to check back in in a minute. Okay, and we also have Todd Romano is our solicitor this evening. Kelly Ravenell is here representing Steer, our engineering consultant, and Rick Rogers is DPW. And we have and Rotella is the land use clerk. Okay, so I think there was a motion to move items 2B and 2C forward to just take care of that business quickly. So is there a motion to do that?
So moved. Rosemary.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second that. All right. And motion is second. All those in favor? Stu?
I.
Okay, Christine?
Yeah.
Janice?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
And myself, that's six, right? Yeah, six. And then no Amanda right here. Okay. Okay. And then okay. Like, do we have to do 2B and 2C motions, or was that all encompassing?
I think you, well, Todd knows better than anybody, but in the past, we've always done one motion to create the committee and another motion to actually appoint members to the committee.
Oh, I was just saying to move it forward in the agenda. I think we've got them all moved forward. Okay, so let me just read the item. 2B is Comprehensive Community Plan Working Group. This was continued from February 1st, 2022 meeting. Appoint members to review and provide recommendations on updating the town zoning ordinances as described in Element 11, and we'll vote. So are there members that? So you're saying that we need to form the group first? Stu, is that what you're saying? Or can we just appoint members to this group? Todd, do we have to form the group as a subcommittee first?
I think you could probably do one motion if you wanted to, Stu.
Okay.
Great, and then appoint.
All right, so this is the Comprehensive Community Plan Working Group. Are there people that would like to do this? I think two or probably three people would probably be a good working group number. So I don't remember who the people were that were volunteering last time. You want to speak up again?
Well, I'll volunteer.
Okay. And Peter?
I'll volunteer as well.
And is there one?
Christine.
Yeah.
Christine? Okay. So that's a good size working group. All right.
So I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Unless there are other members who would like to join us. Seeing none, I'll make a motion that we that's a two-part motion. The first part is to create a committee of the planning board made up exclusively of planning board members to work on updating zoning based on the most recent version of the Comprehensive Community Plan. And secondly, to appoint Christine Shay, Peter Bramonte, and Stuart Hardy as members.
Okay. Stu, can you tell me the vote? There's somebody at the door. I just got to go get it. All right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Christine. I'll do it. Those in favor? Stu?
Yes.
Christine?
Yeah.
Amanda?
Yes.
Sorry, skipped to Janice.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
And Susan Gill was a yes too, so that's unanimous.
Great. And so the second thing on the agenda, which I believe we moved up, would be appointing to, not actually appointing members, but nominating two planning board members to serve on the Solar Policy Committee of Town Council. And what we, our role here is simply to nominate members of the planning board to serve on that Town Council Committee, and then the Town Council would decide if it wishes to appoint those people. So are there any volunteers who would like to serve? There are two slots created just for planning board members. One slot created for Economic Development Commission, which has been filled by their chair, Renee Jones. Four members of the public. And I believe four, three people have already been appointed, and a fourth has come forward recently. And then two members of the planning board. Are there any members of the planning board? Susan, I'm sort of taking over here.
Fine, I had to straighten that out.
So are there any, any, Amanda, you'd be perfect. Hey, Amanda. You can even bring the cat to meetings.
I'm a little busy with this whole.
I'm just joking.
Okay, good. I'm like, uh.
Well, I don't, I don't see anybody raising their hand or expressing any interest, so it looks like I will volunteer to send an email to Adam tomorrow to see if he's interested.
What, you just muted Amanda?
Oh, never mind. It's okay.
Okay. All right, well, I guess for tonight, we just need to vote to appoint Amanda or send that recommendation to the council that we're, you know, for her to be I mean, we can't do a speculative one. Adam wants to do it another time. I guess he can step forward. So is there a motion to I guess it's to appoint Amanda or make a recommendation to the council to appoint her to the Solar Ordinance Committee? Anybody want to make that?
You don't have to do this. I was just joking. I was teasing you.
It doesn't, it don't bother me. I mean.
Actually, I think you'd be good on it.
I'll see what I can do. No promises. I'll try my best.
Good.
Thanks for stepping forward.
Yep. All right.
So moved, so moved. Yes, and I second that.
Okay, so we got a motion in a second to send Amanda's name forward to the council. So for a vote, we'll have Stu Hardy.
Yes.
I mean, yes, Amanda.
Yes.
Yes, Janice.
Yes.
Christine?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yes.
And Rosemary?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you, guys. All right. So we'll go back to the first item. Andrew, there's a bunch of people that you'll need to bring in, as far as I can tell. It's Chris Harkins, I think Jeremy Lake. I thought I saw Bill Landry's name on there, and then I'm not sure if, I'm not sure who those other people are.
Bill Landry, Tom Principi. Principi is the engineer.
See, I don't know if Kevin Vorges is something. Yeah.
We can let Bill tell us if he wants anyone else.
Right, okay. If, yeah, Bill comes for it. Okay, let me read this item. This is Tiverton Heights Limited Partnership Preliminary Plan Public Hearing Major Land Development Comprehensive Permit Application to Construct 275 Units Single Family Duplex Townhouses and Apartments with 25% deed restriction to low and moderate income residents on 135.9 acres located at 797 Fish Road, Platte 110, Lot 207, North Side Souza Road, West Side Fish Road, and East of Main Road. It's in the R60 zoning district. This is for review and discussion and request extension of a time clock with a vote. The time clock goes to February 16th, 2022. I guess the people that are here just identify who you are and what your position is for the record, and welcome.
Madam Chair, William Landry, a partner with Lishon Cavanaugh, 30 Exchange Terrace Providence, Rhode Island. I am the attorney for the applicants.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Chris Harkins, CEO of Harkins Development.
Okay.
Jeremy Lake, Jeremy Lake, I'm a senior associate with Union Studio, Providence, Rhode Island.
Anybody else?
Tom Principi, Principi Engineering Company, civil engineer.
Okay. Anybody else right now? Okay.
Madam Chair, we should have Todd Brayton, unless I missed him, introducing himself. Todd Brayton of Bryant Associates or Traffic.
Yeah, I did see his name. I know, it sounded familiar, but I couldn't remember, recall who it was, so I did see his name also. So I wonder if you can bring him forward.
Hello, this is Todd Brayton, Transportation Director for Bryant Associates.
Okay, welcome. Okay, so this is going to be, this is, this is a public hearing. We're starting from the square one here after three attempts, so we're opening the public hearing for this. I guess, Mr. Landry, did you want to start and do the initial introduction?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I know that several members of the planning board I know little about this project and probably several or many members of the public who are participating either don't recall the first round or are new to the area and also not really familiar with where we've been and where we are right now in terms of what's being presented. So I thought it would be most helpful tonight if I could just provide a brief summary of where we've been in this process, which began back in 2016, 2017. Precisely what is on the table before the planning board as part of this preliminary plan stage of review. Have our principal project team members provide a brief presentation with respect to their particular area of expertise. And the order that we're suggesting is Jeremy Lake from Union Studios going first that can give the big big picture on the project flavor and ambiance and what, what people will see from the street and moving through the development itself. And then Tom Principi, the project engineer, will get down to more of the nuts and bolts about the key engineering issues and solutions that are driven the current project design, including the significant state permits that the project has achieved. Todd Bryant, who provided a report last time around, actually back in 2020, I think, has updated that report to, to, at least the day of the submission, and has a presentation to make on traffic safety and circulation issues surrounding the project. So, you know, I do see this as the beginning of a hearing process. We are prepared to extend the board's time for action on this to whatever suitable time period the board needs to do its work. And I do expect that there will be at least one or two subsequent meetings of the, of the board at which questions can be asked. Questions can always be asked tonight, of course, but we can respond to more precise requests. And one of the things the board has the opportunity to do even during the preliminary public hearing process is to request additional information, and as we did at the master plan stage, we'll make every effort to comply with any such requests in a timely way. So the story begins back in 2016, 2017. This is a 136-acre site. We presented at that time a residential development all on one lot, the units to be held in the condominium form of ownership, but an integrated residential development with a variety of different housing types. 305 residential units were proposed that had a mix of single-family homes. Again, they would be, the units would be held in the condominium form of ownership, and everything outside of the unit itself would be part of the common space of the development. Single-family homes, duplex units, townhouses, and apartment-style units in substantial open space. 25% of the units were and are proposed to be deed restricted to households of low and moderate income. The planning board consulted with outside experts at the master plan stage. The project was peer-reviewed by Steer Engineering for engineering issues. The company called Tischler Bees and Frank Spinella in particular were retained as experts on affordable housing to look at costs and so forth and determine the appropriate density bonus for the development. Correspondent engineering provided opinions, water modeling analysis, and opinion regarding water availability. The matter was heard over several meetings a lot like this. The board ultimately granted master plan approval for the project, and the project was vested based on that approval, but limited to, limited the unit to 275 units, making a finding that that unit count was the appropriate unit count given the carrying capacity of the land and other pertinent factors. The board did make emphatic findings at that time that are critical to the comprehensive permit process. One is that the proposed development is consistent with local housing needs, affordable housing needs, as identified in the town's Comprehensive Community Plan, with particular emphasis on the, on the community's affordable housing plan. Board noted that the language of the comprehensive plan supports multifamily and condominium-style development in this particular neighborhood. The R60 zoning district includes a large areas north of Souza Road rezoned from industrial in 2004. And that the area is ideally located for condominium development due to its highway access. And that future multifamily developments should be directed to this particular area. That's language of the comprehensive plan, affordable housing plan that was incorporated into the master plan approval. The board also noted that the comp plan expresses a policy which is clarified in zoning ordinance provisions to allow multifamily dwellings to encourage townhouse and condominium-style developments as an alternative to the more predominant single-family developments in residential districts, including the R60 zone. The, the board noted that the comp plan proposes that the town focus more directly on multifamily as a way to provide affordable units, and that the trend toward condominium-style development with a significant affordable component is encouraged in North Tiverton under the comp plan. The board also found that the proposed development is in compliance with the standards and provisions of the Tiverton zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. We, unless expressly waived based on local concerns, affordable housing that do not outweigh the state and local needs. The board granted a waiver on density to permit up to 275 units and a waiver on the requirement that there cannot be multiple units on a single lot. The board also found that all low and moderate income units that are proposed are integrated throughout the development and are comparable in scale and architectural style to the market rate units of the project, and that they'll be built prior to or simultaneously with the construction and occupancy of the market rate units. The board also found that there will be, with a density of 275 units, no significant negative environmental impacts from the proposed development as will be shown on the final plan with all required conditions of approval. There was a further finding that the, there'd be no significant negative impacts on the health and safety of current or future residents of the community, including safe circulation of pedestrian and vehicular traffic, provision of emergency services, sewage disposal, available, potable, availability of potable water, adequate surface water runoff, and the preservation of natural, historic, cultural features. There were some conditions to the master plan approval that have been addressed and will continue to be addressed through this submission. The, there was a finding that the development will have frontage on a private street, and that the lot in question has proper permanent physical access to a public street. The conditions limited the development to 275 units as part of the preliminary plan stage of approval. The Tiverton Fire Chief and the North Tiverton Fire District, you know, who we've heard from in, in the past, during, and will serve letters or issued after the master plan stage. But the issue of adequate water is, is an issue that will continue to be developed through the preliminary plan stage of review, and Tom Principi will be addressing that issue as well. There's also a finding that at this preliminary plan stage, the police chief, fire chief, and town consultant will have input into traffic circulation plan. All of this got started, of course, at the TRC meeting back at the end of July, when input on all of these issues was already supplied as part of this, this stage. There was a condition that the applicant adopt environmental management measures to meet state and Tiverton standards such as stormwater management, wetland protection, and so forth, and we'll be addressing that tonight. We have Rhode Island DEM, stormwater, RIPD's approval, and wetlands approval for the project. The infrastructure that's presented at the preliminary plan must show phasing of the entire project. I'll address that in a moment. All low and moderate income units have to be integrated throughout the development, as we described earlier. We have to have a name that's not already in use as a current or historic Tiverton place setting. And condition number eight was that no more than 40% of the total number of units may be three-bedroom units. And at least 60% of the units must be one- or two-bedroom units. No unit may have more than three bedrooms. And finally, following the master plan, the applicant and Tom Planner were to work together with DRMT, with RI DOT, Department of Transportation for input on neighborhood impacts, traffic impacts in the surrounding area. We have done much more than that and submitted and achieved a preliminary, a physical alteration permit from DOT after comprehensive analysis of the surrounding area existing and proposed build-outs and all of the other factors that are part of that analysis, and we have determinations from DOT as part of that PAP. There was also a condition number 10 was a proposed deed restriction to protect open space in perpetuity and proposed timetable for the commencement of construction. So what we submitted last spring and received a certification of completeness on in May, I think it was May 21st, was a very, very substantial submission that touched upon all of the required items for this stage of review in the checklists, the comp permit checklist and standard checklist for land developments and subdivisions. We are proposing 275 units on the site. The the diversity of housing types from the master plan submission has been maintained. They're divided as follows: 116 single-family units, 46, I'm sorry, yeah, 106 single-family units, 46 duplex units, 32 townhouse units, and 81 condominium units in multiple buildings. There are nine buildings with those 81 condominium units, garden-style condominium units. We're proposing two phases. The first phase is the eastern part of the site, on which our 136 acres borders both Souza Road and
Fish.
and Fish on the other side. That area consists of 124 units, I'm sorry, 129 units. The 81 condominiums, apartment-style condominiums, 14 duplex units, and, and 34 single, 311, I'm sorry, single-family homes. Phase two of the development has, on the west side, has 32 townhouse units, 32 duplex units, and 82 single-family units for a total of 146 total units. The big thing that's happened to the design of this project since the master plan has come as a result of the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management permitting process. There is a stream that runs roughly through the center of the property, north and south. We had a conceptual drainage program for that area that was engineered and submitted to DEM. They came back requesting a differently engineered solution there. We had two wetland crossings east to west over that wetland area. We were able to eliminate those two wetland crossings as part of a redesign that was approved by DEM. Nevertheless, maintain emergency access for, for emergency vehicles across the entire property, but eliminate the two wetland crossings. Create about 20 acres of additional open area. Eliminate about 11,000 linear feet of roadway and achieve a, a more environmentally compatible development. I think, we think it's a better development in that the hand-to-hand cooperation with DEM through the redesign very extensive, took many months, was very constructive. So the, the we also went through the physical alteration permit process with DOT that added a lot of clarity to issues like the the need for traffic light, which we'll discuss further shortly. With respect to other conditions in the master plan, we are adhering to the requirement that a maximum of 40% of the unit count be three-bedroom units. And also that 60% of the unit count be one- or two-bedroom units. There was, there may have been some confusion about what, what. Uh, what what? Whether there are four-bedroom units shown on the plan. Uh, because of the scale that would be required, I know to show everything, uh, you know, the scale may not. Exactly be clear on what somebody is looking at in the unit, but there, just to be clear, there are no four-bedroom units on that plan. There are no four-bedroom units. Proposed. We're definitely within your parameters on that. The with respect to affordable housing, there has been a monitoring agent retained, Narragansett Affordable Housing Corporation. They serve in that capacity throughout the state, various developments, they're certified. Uh, by Rhode Island Housing to perform that kind of work and they perform it well. Uh, they'll be the monitoring agent. As I mentioned, there will, there will be. Uh, a uh twenty-five percent proportion. Down every single unit type in the development, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent. For every unit type within the development, every type of unit, twenty-five percent of those units will be. Low or moderate income deed restricted units. So they'll be integrated the same way we had proposed at the master plan level. Uh, we do have uh a set of condominium documents, the proposed declaration that was included. As part of our uh preliminary plan submission. It does have the deed restriction in it that uh I referred to earlier, that there could be no further subdivision. Or addition of units beyond the two hundred and seventy-five units shown on that plan. Um, I think those are the broad points. Uh, if there are any questions of me, I would be happy to answer them. If there are not. I would ask that Jeremy Lake introduce himself, say a little bit about his background. And take us all through um the. Uh, ten, the view from ten thousand feet, I guess, of of the uh. The the project design itself, the different unit types and the uh sense of. Uh, of style uh and walkability that Union Studios was trying to achieve in this design.
Okay.
Alright, thanks Bill. So I don't know if you, any of you have any questions for Bill? Obviously you can also ask questions of Bill as we continue forward. So happy to. Give it a minute or keep moving through.
What we'll do is just let you do all your presentation and then we'll come back to questions. So you can keep going with the flow. It's fine, go ahead.
I'm gonna attempt to share my screen. Are you guys seeing a title slide at the moment?
Not yet. Okay, now we got it.
Now it's, now it's showing? Perfect, okay. Well, thank you again, everyone, for being here tonight. Um, just to give you a sense of what I'm gonna do, and I'm gonna try to move this through this relatively quickly. We don't want to belabor the point, but. Quick introduction again to who we are, recap what we presented uh back a few years ago for our initial approval. Uh, and then just share with you sort of our current proposal and where things have adapted or changed as a result. Um, so my name's Jeremy Lake. I'm a senior associate with Union Studio Architecture Community Design. Um, I was actually in front of you guys just a few months ago on another project. Um, but this is our team. It's already been introduced. Uh, so I'm gonna go through that in much more detail. And again, I just talked about us a few months ago, but we were founded twenty years ago. We are a Providence, Rhode Island-based office. Uh, but we do this sort of work all around New England and actually we have a growing portfolio across the country as well. Um, we do a wide variety of.
Jeremy, you froze.
Jeremy? Bill, do you have a question?
Okay, thank you.
He has any ideas what to do.
Maybe he should log off and maybe he did that, okay. Jeremy, you with us?
Thank you. Back in, Bill. Just give him one second here. Andrew, if we can let Jeremy Lake back in, please.
Sorry about that. You guys here and see me, okay?
There you go.
Press again. This, this can be once every ten times I want to see you for some reason. Boots me out when I'm sharing the screen. Alright. Don't know where exactly I dropped off with you guys, but it was somewhere in the introduction that I can just sort of skip through, but. Yeah, just, just, we are Union Studio. We're an architectural community design firm. Um, I've done work around the state. And in fact, have done several projects even in Tiverton just within the last ten, fifteen years. So. Um, we're very familiar with the context and the character and what is really special about Tiverton. Um, as a recap of our previous um. Approval, just for those of you that are that are newer, for those of you that aren't new, but not with them, this has been a couple of years. Um, we based our design around the notion of traditional neighborhood design. Uh, which is to say, thinking of this place as almost a village onto itself, that it should have. Um, a variety of unit types, it should have a connected series of streets um in a block-like pattern that's easy to get around. Um, that will range of housing types so that someone can have a large single-family home or a smaller townhouse or a little apartment. Um, within a community and as their household needs change, they could stay within that community. Um, and we, we put that up against sort of the conventional way that a lot of development has occurred in the last fifty, sixty years is. The sort of suburban sprawl model where everything is segregated, you know, that the multifamily buildings go in one place, the townhouses go in another. The duplexes go in another, um, and that ultimately leads to a fairly disjointed sort of fabric. Uh, and those individual pockets can be really homogenous, as you see in the lower right image, when it's sort of the same house or house type repeated over and over and over again. So in the case of what we're proposing here, uh, what we're really focused on is creating a a neighborhood that would be walkable, best be friendly. Which is to say, the needs of pedestrians and bikes were considered just as much as the vehicular circulation. Uh, we wanted a broad mix of housing types, as we've mentioned a few times. We'd have a mix of both public and private spaces and amenities. And that the architecture itself would have a familiar look and feel. This is, this isn't a project where we're trying to reinvent the wheel. We're really looking to use. Uh, traditional forms, traditional materials, um, you know, create a residential community that'll fit right in. Uh, and that we would also do so in a way that sort of consolidates developments. You're sort of then putting more density on certain portions of the site. To allow for other portions of the site to be um not impacted at all. So this is the project site outline here in red, if you guys are all familiar, and it's Souza right here to the south and Fisher to the north and east. Um, and in terms of the site itself, uh, these are a little bit outdated, but they're relatively similar. These are the wetland areas of those areas in the white. And so of the hundred and thirty-six or so acres that are on the site, about seventy-seven acres of those are uplands. Uh, and even with our original proposal, we weren't proposing using every last bit of those upland areas. We really focused on the three uh pockets that are highlighted through an orange, which totaled more like sixty-two acres, which is to say less than sort of half of the site area. This was our proposed design. Um, so it was a series of uh smaller interconnected clusters. Uh, so we had sort of a western um. Uh, community over on the side, we had a road that connected through to a little central pocket in the middle. And then a road that connected over to this area along the east that then connects back out to Fish Road. Um, that was an interconnected street network, so all these sort of smaller streets and blocks that make lots of pathways and ways to go around the site. Uh, we've included sidewalks on most of those streets, and so it's very, very production friendly. Um, a range of housing types mixed throughout. Uh, so the colors that you're seeing here are trying to suggest a variety of types. A lighter yellow are single-family homes, uh, the the medium orange are duplexes. The sort of darker orange, those are some of the townhouses. Uh, and then we also out here on Fisher had a single multi-family building, and it was a sort of corridor building that had, I think, just over forty units in it. Um, so those types were sort of spread throughout the community like we've been talking about, uh, but including that that range of options. Uh, we also had a distributed network of park spaces, trails and amenities. So the blue footprints were some of the amenities we were considering. So we had a little. Clubhouse that actually has a pool behind it that we were proposing in this largest cluster. We had a little facility also in a little central spot, uh, and even in the, on the eastern one, we still were considering having some form of a little amenity building. But the thought was that those would be connected and that folks would move around in between those. Uh, and then lastly, the kind of special feature here is where we had um these more internal blocks. Uh, we've actually included um shared drives in the middle of the block that access the parking for those units. Uh, what's nice about that is it puts the sort of services and the parking to the back. So that we're at, when you're out on the street, really what all you're seeing are the front porches of those homes, you know, very few curb cuts, you only have an occasional. To get into those shared drives, but by and large, this creates some really wonderful streets um to walk on and that really uh support a lot of, you know, life. This begins to suggest the sort of character of the architecture and the range of types that we were suggesting. Um, so we had the single multifamily building that we were trying to make a two and a half story structure. Uh, the townhouses are two stories, duplexes generally at two stories, then the cottages and homes themselves are one and a half to two stories generally. Uh, and there are conditions where we don't have the alleys in the back, so some of those might have grounds to the front. Uh, but by and large, where we could, we wanted to use those shared parking lanes in the back as a strategy for for the architecture. Um, and we submitted just some precedent ideas. These weren't necessarily developed specifically for its site. We still haven't designed architecture specifically for the site. Because we're still early in the approvals process, but this just gives you a sense that we would certainly include a range of different um unit types, different sizes. Again, the two bedrooms, the three bedrooms, no four bedrooms, as Bill mentioned. Um, and so that would appeal to a a broad range of in funds and and household types. Again, this is what that could then begin to look like. So with the shared lanes in the back, you don't have a driveway cutting in every single unit. You can really get these nice long continuous sidewalks, tree strips, um, pedestrian scaled. Uh, streets so that they're, you know, not any wider than they need to be to be safe and uh reasonable for the vehicular circulation. You can see the idea of all the homes having front porches fronting onto those streets and creating a real. And we believe that all those things combined are what really create these sort of vibrant communities, really a village sort of scale and character and feel. And so this is. Um, the the western community, this is that little clubhouse I I pointed out at one point with the pool behind. You can see some of the townhouses fronting onto some shared green spaces, um, the streets as they connect through and create these blocks, the shared. Uh, parking lanes to the back. And so that's where we had left off with you guys a couple of years ago when we got our initial approval. Um, I just wanted to briefly share with you kind of what Bill has already described, what's changed since then. The big change has been. That we are moving away from that that central cluster um as a result of those conversations with the V B M. So we're really focusing just on. Uh, the piece to the east and the piece to the west. Um, so if this is what we had previously. Um, this is where we are today, and I know these are difficult to see, but but our point was that generally speaking. It's as it was. There are a lot of little subtle differences, but no major differences beyond uh the removal of that that central portion of the developable area. Um, we do have a fire road that you might see here sort of sneaking down through where where we were able to work through D E M. Uh, so that for emergency access, there'd be a second means of of access to each of the pockets independently. Um, and so just for each of those, uh, this is the the western cluster. So again, I know this is hard to make out. Um, but the point is that it's basically the same. Uh, we still have the same structure of streets and blocks and the green spaces that we were proposing. Um, so there were only little minor adjustments that were needed to reflect some of the changes to the wetland delineations and such. Um, and then on the eastern portion, so this is just off of Fish Road. Uh, this one had a little bit more of an impact uh than the wetlands were redelineated, became a little bit further into this corner, so we had to adjust a few things up in there. Um, and the real difference is that along the Fish Road edge, we wanted to reconsider how that was being. Um, laid out and the unit types that we were considering there. Um, and so above is what we had proposed previously. Uh, we had a bit of what you might think of as a Goldilocks issue. Uh, we had this forty-unit multifamily building that we felt might be a little bit too dense for this context. Uh, but as we kept looking also at further down Fish Road, we had the single-family and these duplex units that we knew when it went time for sales. Uh, we might have a hard time with those along the right on Fish Road. So in some ways, those were not dense enough. Um, and so this is where we've proposed this other strategy that we think is the the right fit, the right kind of density. So these are a series of um nine-unit buildings, so they're three units uh per floor on three floors. Uh, that distribute that density in a series of structures that are more at the scale of a single, a large single-family homes, and actually call these manor homes. Um, so that again, they would allow us to get the apartment type integrated into the project. Uh, but in a form, in a, in a, in a mass that would, that would feel more appropriate for that edge. Uh, so by way of a comparison, uh, this was the previous, you know, forty-unit corridor building that we had been proposing in that one corner of the plan. And this gives you a sense of what a single nine-unit building looks like instead. And so there would be a series of those um along Fish Road. Uh, and so swapping that into our family tree here, again, we still have the townhouses, duplexes and single-family houses in the community as we've been proposing previously. Uh, but now we've swapped out that that larger multifamily building for the series of these nine-unit duplex. So again, I think overall, our overarching point is that the community is largely as it was previously. We just had to make some of those adjustments. Um, certainly we took thirty units out of the scheme. Most of those were in that central pocket where we had to um move away from that in any case. Um, so at the end of the day, our hope is that, you know, nothing has really changed, you know, little things have changed along the way. We've certainly gotten. A lot more detailed stuff worked out. Um, Tom will certainly talk about those things. Um, but that's where we were and I think we're still very much in keeping with that character and scale and type as the previous approval. With uh, I'll start sharing, certainly pull things back up, which is easy, but um.
Alright, whoever the next person wants to go.
I believe that's me. Actually, Jeremy, can you share that page, uh, twenty-seven on your schematic? Just the overall black and white engineering. I think it'd be helpful for the board just as I talk. And again, I I don't want to be too redundant. Uh, Bill did a good job. Uh, explaining the entire project. Jeremy also did a great job explaining, you know, where we were, where we are. I think everybody has a grasp of that. So again. Um, just to spare everybody, um, I won't get into the too nitty-gritty engineering details. I do want to. Remind the board and uh members of the public that um we did have a TRC meeting on this preliminary plan application. That's in front of the board tonight. This was a while ago. It was July thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-one, so last summer. Uh, it was at Town Hall. Um, some of the members of, um, I believe the board were there. Um, the department heads were there and I believe D P W Fire Department. Uh, I'm not sure if Steer was there, I I believe so. Um, but we had a few notes. Um, there wasn't anything substantial in my notes, but I just want to kind of. Uh, remind everybody that there was a technical review committee meeting. So again, at purposes of this evening, I'm just gonna go through real quick. On some of the engineering elements. So to start, again, we all know this where the site is on Souza and Fish Road. Uh, the project is approximately a hundred thirty-six acres, which we've discussed. Um, but I really want to stress um and jump right to the D E M permitting process of this project. Uh, as Bill mentioned earlier, uh, we spent a lot of time with the D E M. Uh, not only for the initial uh permitting, but also. Uh, how we can improve the site, how we can decrease our impervious area, how we can, you know, increase water quality and comply. With all of the new state stormwater regulations. And I do want to mention, it's important to know that we are not asking for any sort of waiver with, you know, the town or the state on. Any of the engineering stormwater or water quality aspect of this. We fully comply with the uh D E M stormwater manual. Um, you know, Bill can let you know how, you know, we we access that permit and I believe it's through a consent agreement, but. Um, through that uh permitting process and the meetings back and forth. We did eliminate approximately, Bill, I believe it's about eleven acres uh. Of upland area, buildable area in the central part of the development. Which will be um left as open space. Um, we did have two very big, large. Bridge uh structure crossings, which again have also been eliminated. Uh, one of the big things for us and working with the fire department on this whole application. Is um obviously fire safety, but also connecting our east development with our west development. We call it phase one, phase two. Again, phase one being on uh Fish Road and then phase two coming off of Souza Road. So one of the big things that we wanted to um stay consistent with, obviously the fire protection. And uh, we still have a connection in between the east and west um developments of the site. And we still have a connection in between the east and west developments of the site. As you can see where Jeremy's cursor is right there, as he mentioned before, that's going to be a gravel fire access road just to connect the two developments. That's going to run adjacent to one of our detention basins. So we've worked with the fire chief on that actually access road. And we're going to continue to work with him on some of the finer details of the gate, the lock, if they're going to have, you know, a special lock for it. But again, you know, we we plan on continuing to have those conversations with the fire department. This entire site is private, so all of the utilities, we have public water, sewer, gas, electric. Everything in the road itself, the drainage basins, everything will be privately owned and maintained. We did receive a availability letter from Tivern Waste Water back in two thousand fifteen. That was when we were going to have our three hundred twenty five units. Obviously, that has changed, but it's been reduced. So the flows are much less. What we're going to be doing is on the easterly phase one development. There's going to be a low pressure sewer line that will transfer over the sewer to the west development. Over on Souza Road, our connection point for the sewer is off of Souza Road at the southwest corner of the of the property. And then the westerly part of the development, which is phase two. All of that development will be via gravity, just because of the contouring and the sewers. There are no sewers along Fish Road for us to tie into. So overall, that's the overall scope for the sewer itself. And we've been in communication with Sarah Sterns and Tiven Waste Water Department. We haven't had any negative feedback. It was all been positive. And again, like I said, they have availability to tie into that main sewer line on Souza Road that was discussed at length at master plan. And as far as the water fires concerned, to kind of round back to the fire chief and North Tiven Water, we've been working with them very closely. Also, as part of the master plan approval process, we have availability letter from them on the three hundred twenty five units. But again, we've reduced that to two seventy five. So reaching out to them that there is still availability. To Bill Landry's point earlier in the evening about the water issue, and I I don't want to use the word issue. Because what what happened was North Tiven Water, it's we're in their jurisdiction. We have the availability. Woodin and Karn is their consultant. They do their hydraulic model, which was modeled for this site at three hundred twenty five units. They came back and confirmed that there is no negative impact on the surrounding infrastructure. And then a third party engineer that was hired by the board, par engineering, conducted independent third party study as well. And they also concurred the same results that there is no negative impact with this development on the North Tiven Fire Department water infrastructure. The element that we're working with that was part of the master plan condition and that we're working with the North Tiven Fire Department and North Tiven Water is interior to the site. We just are currently working on it. It's not an issue. But the higher elevations, we're working on to see if we need a pump to maintain the pressures as you have pressure losses through higher elevations. But again, it's not a capacity issue. It's not a showstopping, if you will, issue for the actual overall development. So I just wanted to stress that with members of the board on where we were before. And then touch base back on the department, Brian, about the management, you know. We comply with all the stormwater rules and regulations. We have approximately thirteen drainage basins scattered throughout the site to mitigate that stormwater runoff. And they are split between detention basins and infiltration basins based on our soil testing. There is some higher water tables there and and some refusal that we've encountered. So all of those basins, again, are in compliance. The D E M did review all the soil testing that was conducted. And again, all of the designs do comply with a around D E M. As far as D O T is concerned, I'll let I'll give it to Todd Brayton in a minute. But again, we do have the D O T permit in hand that was reviewed in detail by the department with Todd's updated traffic study. There were no issues and we do have that permit in hand.
Okay, all right. Are you finished then?
Yeah, yes.
All right, we'll go and move on to Todd. Thank you.
Good evening. As I mentioned earlier, Todd Brayton with Bryant Association, Transportation Director here at Bryant. So we had, we had done this traffic study several years ago. And we we updated it in the summer of twenty twenty. In some of those updates included making revisions based on the review that was done by steer engineering back during the the original timeframe of the project several years ago. And also based on, as as we mentioned by Tom and Bill, the process with D O T for the physical alteration permit. That was, that was approved and we now have for the project. So again, as as was mentioned, there has been changes. So the traffic study originally was based on the three hundred and five units. So that we did not update for the revised report. Although obviously, when there's fewer units, it's going to be fewer trips generated and and of less of an impact. But but the original study was based on the three hundred and five units at the time. And it's also been mentioned, there's there's two proposed driveways on Fish Road for the development, including one that kind of split entrance exit to the north and another one more closer to Souza Road. And there's also a driveway on Souza Road for the, which now is the the phase two or the western portion of the of the site. So we collected traffic data, actually was back in December of twenty fifteen. And including turning movement counts at the intersections of Fish Road and Souza Road and the intersection of Main Road, Souza Road and Schooner Drive. And in the in the process with D O T for the physical alteration permit, we actually did get some new data that we looked at from D O T that was actually collected in May of twenty nineteen. And I'll get to that a little bit more later, but it pretty much showed that our our analysis was very conservative based on the accounts that we took. So even though they were a few years old, they still are are adequate for for analysis. We've done several field reviews over the years at the site along Souza Road and Fish Road. We've also collected some speed data on Fish Road and Souza Road in the vicinity of the proposed driveways. We've collected crash data from the Tiven Police Department. Now, we actually, we've done that in two phases. So we we've collected, I think, over almost eight years of of data in terms of crashes in the vicinity of the of the development. So in terms of the amount of traffic that would be generated by the development, we used I T E's trip generation based on the types of units in the development, which are single family attached housing and residential condominium townhouse uses. So again, this is based on the three hundred and five units that were in the original report. Based on that, there's there'd be thirty nine entering vehicles in the A M peak hour and one hundred and forty two exiting. And the P M peak hour, there would be one hundred and forty eight vehicles entering and eighty one vehicles exiting. So obviously, with the reduction in the number of units that those numbers are reduced as well. So we took those kinds that we 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 had done in two thousand and fifteen and we expanded to twenty twenty five. We use actually, as it turns out, a very conservative annual growth rate of one percent based on some more recent data from River Island Statewide Planning Program. The the percentage increase per year is more along the lines of about point two, point three percent per year. So we actually were very conservative with our our projections. We also took anticipated traffic from some approved projects. And included that in our in our traffic volumes. So again, very conservative with our with our with our traffic numbers. So for in terms of capacity, based on the existing counts, the expansion of the counts, adding on the trip generation from the proposed development. We looked at how well the intersections operate with with all this new traffic. We use a highlight capacity manual, which is the most commonly used reference for evaluating traffic operations. It uses a concept called level of service. Many of you have heard this already, but I'll just kind of briefly comment on what that is. It's it's a qualitative measure which describes the operational conditions of traffic. And in this case, it's based on delay or seconds per vehicle for the intersections. Level of service A would be the most favorable conditions. Level of service F would be the least favorable. And we focus on the peak hours, A M and P M, because that's the most critical periods. That's when there's most traffic on the roadways. So if operates well, during those times, it would also operate well in in off peak times. So the peak hours, they range at the different sections of between seven and nine A M and three fifteen, four forty five P M. And again, the analysis was done at the intersections of Fish Road and Souza Road, Main Road, Souza Road and Schooner Drive, as well as Fish Road with the two proposed driveways and Souza Road and the one proposed driveway there. So so a quick summary based on on all the capacity analysis and level of service is that there would be minimal impacts from the posed traffic on on those intersections. The proposed driveways would actually operate at level service B or better in the A M, P M, peak hours. The intersection of Fish Road and Souza Road would remain unchanged with level of service, except for the eastbound approach, which actually goes from level of service B to level of service C. And and that changes from future no build to future build condition. For the intersection of Main Road, Souza Road and Schooner Drive, the levels will not change between future no builds and future build conditions, with the exception of the Fish, of the Souza Road approach, which changes from level of service C to level of service D in the A M, P, A M peak period. But the eastbound and westbound approaches of that intersection, you have poor level services. Future no build even without development. And then obviously, that would continue with with the development. And and again, all this analysis was was is pretty conservative because, as I said before, now it's a fewer number of units. We also were very concerned with our with our expansion of the traffic. So likely that those delays are actually going to be less than than what we're actually showing in our report. But one of the things, and I think Bill had mentioned this, one of the things that came up during the review with D O T was looking at whether the intersection of Main Road and Souza Road and Schooner Drive would require a signalization. So they requested that a traffic to the warrant analysis be performed for that intersection. So we did that both both with the actual counts that D O T had from twenty nineteen as well as the future proposed volumes, which included the background growth and the and and the trips from the development as proposed. And it does not meet any signal warrants. There's nine different warrants. Four of the warrants are not met. And five of the warrants are not applicable for this development or for the for that intersection. So in summary, it does not meet signal warrants and D O T obviously ruled that that finding and that's included in the P A P. So we looked at safety analysis, stopping site distance at the intersections on Fish Road and on Souza Road. And it does meet all the requirements for stopping site distance. We do recommend that the vegetation in the vicinity of the of the driveways be cut back just to ensure proper site distance is available. And that's both that Fish Road and Souza Road for for the driveways. So the crash history, we looked at, again, we had about seven and a half years, almost eight years of of data from the Tiven Police Department. And our study area, which primarily is the area of Main Road, north and south of Souza and Fish Road from Souza Road to north of the posed development driveway. There were there were only thirty three crashes in that almost eight year period. So not not a large amount. And and there are very few that had injuries as well. So there was no indication that there'd be unusual conditions that would be worsened by the proposed development. We did look at the site circulation and the proposed layout will safely accommodate the traffic that will enter and exit the site and will allow for the safe movement of emergency vehicles to and from the development. So in conclusion, the proposed driveways will operate at excellent levels of service. Fish Road Souza Road will continue to operate acceptable levels of service. Main Road Souza Road Schooner Drive will continue to operate at levels, at acceptable level of service in the A M. And there will be no change in level service from the development during the P M peak hour. We do recommend that the intersection, because it it does show some some poor level of service that'd be monitored as this development. And I know there are other developments, I think, that are proposed in the areas as as those also start coming online. But either it is a D O T locate signal or D O T intersection. So it's probably important that they say on top of that, but also the town and anyone else with interest should also kind of stay on top of that. The geometric configuration for site driveways is such that adequate, safe stopping site distance utilizing the site are achieved. And again, it's recommended to cut back the vegetation at those driveways to ensure adequate site distance. There are no existing unsafe conditions in the vicinity of development. And based upon our analysis, traffic operations on the surrounding roadways and intersections will experience minimal change with the addition of the traffic generated. And there will be no reduction in safety due to the development as proposed.
Okay. Is that it? Everything then? Anyone?
I just, Mr. I just have a question for Mr. Bryant. And I know the board members know the answer to this, but there may be members of the public that are confused. Could you explain, you know, what's meant by these A, B, C, D level of service? Is this like when we went to school and and D would get you in big, big trouble? Or is there is there a different way to interpret that?
Yeah, yeah, I did mention a little bit about that, but yeah, it's it's not that way. Yeah. So it's unlike in school, or if you if you got a D or even an E, you'd you'd be, you'd probably be in trouble, not getting good grades. But in in terms of capacity, level service D is is completely acceptable. And even level service E is under capacity. But so it's it's definitely a case where you're not you're not looking for As all the time. And in a lot of cases, you're not going to get that.
Thank you. And the the P A P process, did that take into consideration the 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 precise area that we're talking about? I know you mentioned all three roads, Schooner, Main and Souza. Did did D E M evaluate, D O T rather, evaluate future projections of additional background development and so forth as part of the P A P process?
Yes, that that was included in the analysis.
Okay, and that's something you asked them to do in the P A P application and that that was carried out and the P A P was issued. And do I understand correctly that we're talking about an absorption process that that may well take many, many years from this for this development. It may be seven, eight years. And that we are open to a process where the incremental impacts of development over that long period are evaluated in in terms of the warrants for a future traffic light. And and we could possibly be a part of the solution, some future solution, or at least you know, funding the analysis or something to to help the town understand, you know, what a fair and and reasonable contribution would be from our particular project, recognizing there are a lot of other significant projects underway and possibly underway in the surrounding area that would presumably have an interest in doing the same thing. I think that's all I have of Mr. Bryant and and our team now. There may be more that's jarred by questions. I I I certainly don't want to speak for the fire chief. I don't know if he's here or not. But he and other department heads, I think, were very thorough in their assessments at the at the technical review committee stage where where more precise technical issues are discussed than in this this context here. I do recall the fire chief, you know, saying he had really no issues here. He wasn't interested in maintaining the hydrants, wanted the applicant developer to flush the hydrants. He felt they were properly. uh really no issues here. He wasn't interested in maintaining the hydrants, wanted the applicant developer to flush the hydrants. He felt they were properly spaced. Fire protection uh uh services, properly dispersed. He had a a preference that there not be a gate at the uh emergency access uh roadway from one phase to the other, and that there be a a different way for for dealing with the privacy of that area and its restriction for emergency uh purposes. Um, and I don't believe any other issues were uh raised there. Uh, the Department of Public Works felt that that since the capacity capacities were there and for for the necessary services, and there's very little involvement expected of uh DPW in uh future going forward. Uh, you know, there was one view expressed, uh, I think by a planning board member that signaledized, uh signaledized intersection, you know, isn't necessarily a a good thing. Um, but I I do think that that, you know, that whole issue is something that the board, uh, I know in recent months has been very interested in uh in understanding the future and and what uh assistance can be provided by other stakeholders in the area. As as the board knows, we we can't put in a traffic light there uh if we wanted to. Um, i- it has to be warranted by DEM. We're not close to that, but it doesn't mean that we won't get close to that at some point during the build-out of our of our project.
Okay. Is that? Is that, are you finished? I guess that's one of my questions. Okay. Okay, um, I wanted to start this because I know there's a lot of information here to absorb. There's a lot of information to cover. And so as a starting point, I mean, we have a new solicitor. We have a new um steer engineering person. We have um a new DPW person and five of our eight members are new. So um, there's a lot of background that that we went through, um, but I wanted to try and be as thorough, start out being as thorough as we can. So where I wanted to start with um is a review of the master plan conditions and then touch on the things that were discussed, some of the things that were pointed out at the technical review committee. Um, because as as you'll see as we go through this, I think there are things that we still need to have in order to consider this application completely um for the board. So the thing is, um, for the conditions imposed by master plan, they said they must be satisfied prior to submission of a preliminary plan. So I know you presented it, but that these were ongoing, but these things were supposed to be completed and presented as part of the packet that came to us. So um, what I'm going to go through is each I, each condition and the things that I came up with that I feel like we're still um missing in order to to do a thorough evaluation. So the first um condition was for the monitoring agency for the affordable housing, which you have submitted from there against it, affordable housing. And um, you've also submitted your letter of eligibility from Wood Island Housing. And the other part of that was the the um at the preliminary plan stage, if further engineering details reveal that proposed infrastructure or other characteristics of this parcel of land cannot support this number of units, um, it needs to be reconsidered. So my comment on this is that the engineering details must be um demonstrated for the infrastructure complete. Um, and any other characteristics of the parcel that can support a density of two hundred and fifty units. Um, I think that was the top that I came up with around the first condition. Um, the the second condition touched on the fire department um and water availability. So we have a a North Tiverton Fire District letter um from November of twenty fifteen. And it just, it um described that it allowed for water availability for peak flows, but it does not include the water allowance for firefighting and suppression, and those details are required as part of this condition. And it also requires a letter from the Tiverton Fire Marshal um that requires uh written affirmation also. So you in the master plan, it was that you had adequate flow, but the the condition that you need to meet at this stage is that you have um adequate pressure and volume for firefighting and suppression. And I noticed when you made that comment about the higher elevations, you had some um difficulty with with pressure. So I think that definitely needs to be um flushed out more um before we can uh sign off on that. And we need, in all of these cases, we need written um affirmation from each of these departments um to put into the file and for the record. So when we get to the third condition, uh, that touched on the fire chief, the police chief and the engineer um that had to do with traffic circulation plan. Um, they found that it said that the police, the fire and steer must agree that traffic circulation addresses all significant circulation issues of vehicles, emergency vehicles, pedestrian and bike traffic using the ASHTO standards. So um, my my questions that relate to this or that need to meet is that the review of the revised roadway plan and all issues are resolved satisfactorily. And I know you did the traffic study and you've done an update, but we have not received the update. You said you did a twenty twenty update. We we don't have that. We need that submitted to us. Um, and the intersection study that was done, we also need that. Um, you've presented it, but we we need to, we need that um information. Um, so that our so steer engineering and the fire department, police can department can also review it. Um, so all those things need to be um looked at. I know there were questions about sidewalks and some of those things as well, so I think there's a lot more in the traffic and the circulation patterns. And also the biggest thing I think that has changed is before you had three different sections and they were integrated. So the flow of traffic, you basically had Souza Road and Fish Road as both entrance and exits. Now, losing that middle section, you've isolated each unit and you basically have one way in and one way out. And I don't know if that's and creates a different traffic study or pattern or whatever, but it just seemed, it just struck me is that it seems like it changes the circulation pattern when you have only one way in and one way out of of a um development that has a large number of of um people. Um, the other thing I thought felt in this category is that no lighting plan. I couldn't find on the plans, perhaps they're there, but I couldn't find any uh lighting for streetlights for um, if there's lights on the larger buildings, if there's parking areas that are lit, um, if if, you know, the if the amenity units are going to be there. So what we need to see as part of the design review process at this stage is a lighting plan. Um, complete lighting plan. I'm sure you know how to present that. I found that we do need that. Okay, then moving on to the fourth condition, that was environmental management measures um that had to do with stormwater wetlands and evaluating habitats and species. Um, you said that your Ripley's permit you have in hand, but we have not received it. Um, if it is, if it is definitely done. Um, and I would also like to get a copy of the DEM stamped plan that they approved. Um, we have your plan. We'd also like the DEM stamp plan, um, if that approval has gone through. Um, and then um, you know, this one, there's going to be a little resistance, but I'm I'm looking to, in order to assure us that that we have a good, strong environmental management um setup is that you do a a full environmental study and management plan. And the reason I'm asking for this or suggesting it is um in the last couple of years, we did, we did the casino. And that is, that was a forty-six acre plant uh parcel, and they did a complete environmental study to satisfy, I think, um, the conditions um that we had set forth. We just completed the Brayton Solar Project, which is a hundred and one acres, and they did a very um thorough um environmental study as well as a very thorough management plan for um forest and grasslands. And then the Tiverton Heights project is surpasses both of those. That's a hundred and thirty-five acres with a lot of wetlands in it. So I don't think we're beyond our scope of requesting a full environmental assessment of this this area with a management plan. Um, and how how all this space is going to um I guess be be utilized or how it's going to protect the the um, the wet. I I know DEM will address the wetlands, but then there's also the habitat, the species and and that kind of thing. Um, and then the, and and also there'll be a lot of lot clearing. There's going to be a lot of trees down, um, in open space created with this. Um, the other thing I know also that that's not found a lot of favor, um, but we did receive a letter during the master plan and again, for the um preliminary plan uh letter from Tiverton Materials that discussed their um, their blasting. Um, I know that it's been a longstanding problem in this town, but you can fill it anywhere up Fish Road and down as far as the police station. And if you're putting three store units all along Fish Road, I don't think it's totally out of um the realm of unreasonableness to ask for some kind of, I don't know what you call it, if it's a seismic study or something um that basically shows what what the um, what the impact would be to Fish Road, the Fish Road residences, as well as um all the way across through that parcel. Or I don't know how you do a disclaimer in your your deeds to in to inform the people that purchase those houses, but um, you know, I've been strongly encouraged that that pursue this. Yeah, that fell into the environmental management category condition. Um, the next one was the phasing of the infrastructure plan. Um, the comments I had for that was, they were mine, it's one that you changed it four phases to two phases, and I didn't notice on the plan, you have that have them marked out, which they should be, described them, but they should be marked as as the two phases because that is a change. And providing all updated information for the infrastructure. The other thing that was omitted from this um, from this application was a complete landscape plan. Uh, we require that for all master plan and be comprehensive plan, um, including the buffers along Fish and Souza Road. Um, so once you get your layout finalized, then you need to get a complete landscape plan. And along with that would then be your lighting plan and any signage that you're going to do. Usually we we ask for um some kind of signage plan. I mean, it probably will be minimal, but I know there will be some and that needs to be submitted also. Um, the sixth condition had to do with the uh affordable units being integrated throughout for both phases compatible in scale and style to market rate units. They should be built and occupied simultaneous with market rate units. Um, and I felt that the building permits will control that thing, the project. Um, I think the plan needs to show the location of the affordable units and the number of bedrooms and the building styles that you're going to use House A, B Cottage A, whatever to label it. Um, and you, if you did provide the architectural renderings and plans, however, you, those are preliminary. We'll need to see what your final um submission is going to be for architectural plans and and style, because I know um, you did have four four units in there and you've said you're doing three units, so you're going to make an adjustment in in that um part of your application. Um, and what else? And I think that's the biggest thing that was looked at also at the TRC is is this pen should show every structure, every unit, and whether it's affordable for a market rate. And it would be help, it would be, I don't know if it's required, but it would be benefit, label what it is so that we can all what the is going to be when it it built, like if one's a cottage A, one's a house A, one's a house B, one's a a town, one's a duplex. I mean, since you just have um, you know, the the two-dimensional layout, it's hard to tell what what they're going to be there. Um, but I think that needs to be flushed out a lot more so that we know you have to commit to where those affordable units are be and how many bedrooms are going to be. And then uh, condition seven was naming it other than Tiverton Heights. I mean, I don't know that was a condition for master plan, so that still needs to be resolved. Um, and then condition eight was the minimum of sixty percent, one and two bedroom and no more than three bedroom for forty percent. I noticed there weren't any one bedroom units being offered. Um, I know it was the condition written as one or two, not one and two, so I guess it does give you an option, but I'm just wondering why you didn't offer any one bedroom. Um, and again, it said the four units, the four units need to be altered in your present, in your packet. Um, for the ninth condition, that was look and plan or coordinate the DOT review. Um, so it goes back to the DOT, the DOT letter we have is from October of twenty twenty. Um, and was for the um physical alteration permit bond only. Um, that was the letter we got from DOT that basically gave, said that they were um describing the bond and how much it was going to be. But again, we don't have um, the DOT letter for your physical alteration permits. Um, and they need, and steer needs to redo that also. Um, and then I, the thing you submitted was asset, what is it? Asset management plan. And on page two, you did have some hi, I I highlighted the things that were for Tiverton. I don't know which things in there specifically might impact your product um at some point when we go into detail more, if you can, if you can just I guess, in inform us what, how those on that asset management plan from DOT is going to, may or may not impact your project um since you presented that information. Um, and it was just a matter of what work was to be done and where it was going to be to provide the details to us. Um, the tenth condition was the deed restriction for open space and no future subdividing, and that was provided. And the eleventh condition was the start of construction and proposed timetable, which you also did include. So there are a number of things, um, there are conditions that were supposed to be completed and submitted with your initial um preliminary plan proposal. There they weren't presented as you can keep working on them as we go through the process. So I'd strongly encourage you to get that information to us because there's no way we can do a thorough and um complete analysis, you know, of of your project until we get that information. Um, oh my god, oh, okay, so I'll talk a little longer. The the technical review committee, those comments, again, I think some of those, that was held in July. I think a number of things were gone over at that time, and it was highly anticipated that revised plans and more information would be forthcoming, and since then, nothing has happened. There's been no revised plans. Um, so you had the Tiverton, the other thing was the Tiverton wastewater letter. Um, that was for March twenty twenty. We haven't received that. We need to get that into our our hands. Um, again, the PAP, the Ripley's. Um, and then I was requested that you had detail of sheets eight through twelve, and those are things that have, those sheets have never been updated or provided. Um, was also asked if you're doing rent rentals versus homeowners. That question hasn't been answered. I mean, that's not critical, but it would be helpful for the board to know. Um, thing I noticed on the plan was, I'm not sure, it seems like you've left it kind of up in the air. It was pointed out when you did your presentation, but um if the condo club and the pool and the tennis courts are being eliminated. Um, it was kind of alluded to. I don't know if that's actually going to happen. I I think I see the understanding is that because you had to move those other units, basically what you did was you sacrificed the amenities in order to get those other thirty-six units onto the parcel. Um, let's see. I guess I, what I got out of when you were talking about the hydrants, I got out of it that that the fire department you needed to have more hydrants, that you needed to have them closer, so I would double check. I mean, I guess I would verify that with them. Um, and you also needed larger turnarounds on the dead-end roads that were greater than a hundred and fifty feet in length. Um, and your alley was questioned whether the sixteen-foot alleyway alleyways were wide enough for two-way traffic. Um, and I guess it was also asked for improvement for the sidewalks that they needed to show some kind of interconnection and correction and shown clearly on the plans. Um, so those were the, I guess, the main things that I pulled out of it, but I would recommend that you go through the technical review committee meeting notes again and see what um see what what items also haven't been addressed yet, and those need to be submitted to the board for our review. Um, I think at some point, didn't really fall into one of these categories, but the pro forma, I think that that needs to be gone over again so that the board members that are here understand uh what it is and and what it means. I mean, we have the sheet in there um in our packet, but to most but to most of us, it doesn't mean a whole lot. So that needs to be, we like, I'd ask that you explain that better. Let's see. Oh, and then, yeah, I think, I think there, I won't go into this tonight, but I had a number of comments on the different sheet, the site plans. They can go, oh, and the last thing I wanted to comment on is, as far as since this is a public hearing, I don't believe we're gonna take public comments tonight because this application is still missing a lot of items. And I think the best way to present this going forward is gonna be in topics or sections, whether it's traffic or stormwater or architecture, instead of getting all the information, trying to absorb it all. And then, once all the information is presented, then I think it would be helpful if the public wants to comment then. But I think it's a little premature now. But I did wanna acknowledge that we have received a number of letters from residents. And I just wanna put their names into the record so they know that we did receive their comments. And we have provided those to the applicants as well. It was Amanda Gomes, Lisa Vargas, Jamie French, Brittany McAdam, Susan Berman, Cody Braz, Deborah Gee, Anna Jones, Matthew King, Wesley Lopes, Alan Cormier, and Yuri Ivanov. And what I would say is, you know, if people have comments they wanna make, then they are allowed to, I mean, you are through the hearing process, able to either comment at points in the future or you can submit things in writing and they will go into the public record. And all these letters have been distributed. So I think with that, that was kind of where I wanted to go tonight. I wanted to give you an opportunity to present this, to kind of get the process started. But I do think there's a lot, a number of, enough things that are still outstanding that to try and start dissecting your plan at this point is a little premature. So, I don't know if other members of the board wanna comment, but that's kinda where I'm coming from on this.
Susan, Susan, Madam Chairman, may I ask a question of our legal counsel, Todd Romano, regarding the issue of schoolchildren? I may. Todd, we were informed by a previous legal counsel that in a comprehensive permit application involving low and moderate income housing, that the issue of children in the public schools and the cost of that is not, is not a legitimate issue for a comprehensive permit project. So, we simply avoided that when we were, when we were going through the master plan because it's irrelevant. But a number of members of the public, as Susan has just indicated, have sent us emails and letters. And that issue keeps coming up over and over again. So, in order to save our time and the time of the public, what is your take on the issue of children for a comprehensive permit project?
I think if either your comprehensive plan or your affordable housing plan in some manner addressed that and specifically, more specifically, I should say, the impact of or on infrastructure, and you can somehow tie it together, if you're understanding what I'm trying to relate to.
I do, yes.
Then it would have some relevancy. Mr. Landry may think differently. But again, you have your standards for approval, right? And you have your comprehensive plan and your affordable housing plans that you have to tie everything back to in order to make a sound decision.
Thank you.
So, so relevant or not is to be determined, I guess.
Thank you. Yes, and I'll go through, I'll go through our affordable housing plan very carefully. And also, any other references in the comprehensive community plan to infrastructure and particularly school infrastructure and et cetera. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I guess I'll ask if any other members of the board have a general question. I really would like to save the specific questions for when we go into different topics, if you don't mind, just to keep things a little clearer. You know, where things get, everybody gets glazed over, so I don't know. Anybody has any general comments?
I just had a couple, Susan, and they kind of just seek further clarification of points you've already made, so I don't wanna go too deep into them. But there was, from my recollection at the TRC meeting, in addition to a request about percentage of rental versus homeownership, there was also, I thought, a proposal of a building type that was showing mixed use, live-work. And I don't know if that's still in this project or not. And so it would be good to have clarification on that in terms of the building prototypes that are being sought. And then, I did not see, and you already mentioned that the updated traffic studies, but I also thought that in the plan sets, which related to both landscaping and traffic management, there's never any plan set currently that shows actually the intersection of Main Road and Souza Road with the dimension of the distance of the proposed entrance. And then turning radii in and out and tagging on what was Stu's question about schools and children, you know, are buses going to be picking up within the community or on street side? So I think that's important information in any further traffic study and landscaping in terms of sidewalks, distance to the main road entrance specifically off Souza. To be able to see that and to understand how those considerations are gonna be included in both landscape and traffic management. So that's all I just wanted to add.
Thank you. Anyone else? I know, this is a big project. It's a lot of information. And I think, you know, if we have to go back to some of the, have you reviewed some of the earlier studies that were done, I mean, just to bring, because this board is the one that has to make the preliminary plan decision if they feel like they need some kind of summary of the physical impact study or of the traffic or of, I don't remember what else, the water, the hydrology. Then I think, you know, we're gonna have to backtrack a little bit. And hopefully not go into as big a detail, but as much detail as the board requires in order to make an informed decision that they're comfortable with. I think that's where we're going with it.
I have to agree with, agree with you on the environmental, obviously, the environmental impact. Because I'm very concerned about that area and all the wildlife and the can't think of the word right now, but nonetheless, it's a very big concern for me in that area, especially with everything else that's going on around it. Where are we pushing all this? What's there? What's, you know, what's gonna happen, so on and so forth, but. And then, the study in twenty twenty with the traffic study, I just wonder if the, I think, I don't know if everyone was kinda staying at home at that time too because of the whole coronavirus and everything like that, so I don't know if that would change any impact on the, on that study as well. So I was just thinking about that. Just wanted to note those couple of things. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Trying to figure out, so I know we still have, we have Ed, our new clerk is in the office, so if you have things to submit, you can submit them, things that are gonna require Jennifer, the planner, I know she'll be back in another week or two, that you'll need to coordinate things with her. If we wanna start, I guess, in the interim, if she follows up on more discussions about these studies that we wanna, wanna propose, I guess there needs to be a conversation about that from your side and from her side, but you know, the board can't really discuss it individually. It'll have to go through her, so I think that's something that will go forward, so. Mr. Landry, do you have any other comments you wanna make at this time?
I think I'll save most of them, just like a couple of observations and, you know, not to get too picky, but in terms of the submission, the submission is an ongoing process, you know, most of the references in the master plan decision talked about items being submitted at the preliminary plan stage. There, your checklists require items relating to utility capacities, water, sewer, those things to be submitted at the preliminary plan stage. And that doesn't mean that, at the beginning, it says by the time of the preliminary plan decision. And the certificate of completeness that we received particularly affirmed that those types of items will have to be submitted during the preliminary plan process. And this is a whole different design. We had to redesign the project to come down considerably on the unit count. And then we had to design it even more in connection with the D E M suggestions. So it's, it's coming on for everybody's review and a lot of the people, the new people, to just see the plan. There'll be more TRC work, I hope. But I think the idea is for this preliminary plan to evolve through this stage with the information we give you, the permit, the comments that you provide based on what we now know is the fixed proposal. And, you know, it doesn't mean it can't be changed, but this submission process is now an incremental process. The board clearly has the right to request reasonable information. We did that at the master plan stage. We're certainly gonna do that again at the preliminary plan stage. With respect to the school age children issue, I haven't heard anybody suggest lately that that is an issue, the pretty, the consistent view on that of the State Housing Appeals Board over the years has been this, that, you know, the Comprehensive Permit Act, the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act doesn't require a town to have fifty percent of their housing as affordable housing. It's just ten percent. And once a town achieves that ten percent, you know, they're no longer open to comprehensive permit proposals. So the thinking over the years on school age children is that, you know, you're trying to get to a ten percent level. And that accounts for everybody. There are some municipalities that have two percent of their housing as affordable housing and one point nine percent of that two percent are people in nursing homes that where each bed counts for a unit. You know, the idea was to have a mixture and not to exclude children from having an opportunity to live in affordable housing. There are a lot of families that, you know, that need that housing a lot more than in other members of the overall demographics. So, you know, the idea of putting it all on the backs of families and discriminating against families and trying to fulfill affordable housing goes in absolutely opposite direction of the problem in the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act, which is supposed to supply a solution. Now, what we are doing here, as in other communities, is looking at things like the bedroom mixes. That's part of your regulation. You don't get children in one and two bedroom units. We don't have any four bedroom units, you know, we're required to have a certain percentage of two bedroom units. Now, that's the, that's the control, you know, that is recognized, because there's a lot of different kinds of people with children and without that are in two bedroom homes and condominiums. So, that was my thoughts on that, without trying to pick a fight, but just put the other, the other perspective, which I think is, has been, you know, if not almost universally followed since the act came out in the nineteen nineties. There are a lot more multifamily units that have been created under the act than single family housing. A lot of the problem, you know, not intentional certainly, but a lot of the problem that leads to the affordable housing crisis is the predominance of single family houses and not the opportunity for multifamily houses and multiple bedroom counts and multiple types of units that can serve different kinds of people. And I think it's expected that, you know, if a town is gonna balance its affordable housing load to a minimal amount of ten percent, that school age children are part of that process, not to be, you know, discriminated against. But we appreciate, I know I'm speaking for my clients and the other members of the team, this board's diligence as usual in identifying issues. And I think there are a lot of answers in that package to a lot of the questions that were raised. Our job, as I see it, is to make this a lot easier for the board to understand. We were asked at the technical review stage, you know, or the suggestion was made that some blow-up plans at a different scale so that people could really see portions of neighborhoods more clearly. You know, those were all good ideas that we took to heart. We wanted to get, at the time, it was expected that this hearing would take place a lot quicker, a lot more quickly after the TRC meeting took place. And we, you know, we don't wanna start revising and changing plans if our first three hours on our, on our feet before this board had another set of requests from people who were not involved in the TRC for different kinds of information. We wanted to have this meeting and then, you know, prepare additional materials for you in the weight and quality that the board was most interested in. I think there are only one or two board members that were at the TRC meeting. So we appreciate your input in that regard. It was very helpful. And I think that's all we have to say for tonight beyond what was presented. Susan, I, I thought you were gonna go from topic to topic. But if you're prepared to wrap this up pretty quickly, I would like to make a few positive suggestions and also a few comments, if that's all right. Madam Chairman?
Go ahead.
First of all, I completely endorse Susan's request for more information. It was requested in the conditions. Some of those conditions specified that the material be presented as part of the preliminary plan application. And that did not happen. But apart from that, I'd just like to make a quick comment about, to Jeremy, and Jeremy knows that I'm a big fan of Union Studio and his work in Tiverton. And I'm just looking at your document that I think everybody has called Preliminary Architecture Package. And there are several buildings that, Townhouse B, House A, House D, that do have an option for either a den or a fourth bedroom. I think that was just something, you were not familiar with the agreement that we had already reached, that no more than forty percent of the units have three bedrooms and that at least sixty percent of the units have one or two bedrooms. But I have a quick suggestion to you, Jeremy, and I know you can handle this without too much difficulty. If you wish to do dens as opposed to a fourth bedroom, make sure that that den cannot easily be converted into a fourth bedroom by not putting a closet into it and by not putting a door on it. Have it more like an alcove. Have it, have the den in a discreet space and maybe walk an archway into it, but not with a door that closes. Because once people buy those units, you know, gee, the den turns into a fourth bedroom. I know, Jeremy, that you can handle that without any difficulty at all. I just also wanted to make a quick comment because it's relevant to the traffic and it's relevant to to some other issues that
to some other issues that, that we're going to have to deal with, especially traffic. And that's that an awful lot has happened in this neighborhood in just the last few years. You haven't been before this board for six and a half years, if my math is correct, and it might not be. But it's been, I think it's been more than six years. And an awful lot has taken place in that neighborhood. We've had the build out, which is now just coming to a conclusion of the, of seventh phase of the villages of Mount Hope Bay. The so-called Bayview condos, which abuts your land, that's fifty-two units. That is on the table. That's going to happen. That's moving, that's moving rapidly now that they have their stormwater permit from DEM. Also, we have another comprehensive permit project, a, a big one, which will, which will in, be placed on like nine and a half acres with frontage on both Main Road and Souza Road, also abutting your property. So also, there's something going on with the so-called industrial park or business park. An owner has, a developer has come in and has asked for the option to buy the entirety of it. So all of these things are in your neighborhood and, and I think they all have to be taken. We have to take a holistic approach. And obviously, your grandfather in under the old comp plan. I, I believe that's the case, although Todd may correct us later. We've had a new comprehensive community plan since you last appeared before us. It was approved in two thousand and eighteen. So I, I would like to underscore what Susan said regarding the traffic study. I, I was not able to go to the TRC back in July. I was not here. I, I read the minutes very carefully and the minutes did indicate, you weren't there, Todd, I don't think, but I, I think that Tom mentioned that there would be a new traffic study based on more recent data. And that that would be forthcoming. So I, I hope you're working on that. And I would like to underscore what Susan said. I think we really need chapter and verse. If you're referring to Ashto and level of service, we don't need, we, we need the specific reference and maybe that even turns into you know, turns into a, a direct quotation or a page out of their manual, which I don't have access to. When I did have access to it, the levels of service on Souza Road, the intersection, were not particularly encouraging at all, and it's just gotten worse. And I, I have been able to gather some information, which I'll share with the board later on. Particularly with, with respect to Souza Road. But Todd, and, and, and if you, and if you refer to any of the data from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, again, chapter and verse, we, we want references. And I think, Susan, that we really should request a peer review of the traffic. I think it's hugely important. And so I would say that. And then my, my, my final comment, I guess, would be directed to, to Tom. Tom indicated at the TRC, and Tom can correct me if I'm wrong, that the amenities that had been included in the master plan submission involving a swimming pool, a clubhouse and, and a few other items, I think a little movie theater, that those were pretty much gone. And I didn't see anything on the, on Tom's new plans drafted last March that indicated any clubhouse or swimming pool. I, I think that going back to the fact that there will be kids in this project and they have to be educated, but they also need a place to play. And there are no athletic fields anywhere near this project in the town of Tiverton. We have them way up in the north end of town. Way down in the south end of town, but there's nothing in this neighborhood by way of an athletic field or park or any place where, where kids can hang out. It'd be nice to have, it'd be nice if you could bring some amenities back into the picture. So that's, that's all I have to say at this point.
I, I would just comment real quickly. I, I don't think it's maybe some confusion. I, I, I don't think it's accurate to say that we've eliminated all of those amenities. In fact, I think for the large part or all of them, and, and I think we've added additional ones back in, and Jeremy might be able to get more granular on that quickly, just so we can sort of put that issue to bed. But it's not accurate that I, in my, in my memory here, that we've eliminated those, those amenities. Jeremy, could you confirm that?
Yeah, I would say on the western portion, we still, I think we're accounting for exactly what we had there previously. When the whole little middle village went away, we took away the, obviously the amenity and that rotation along with that little village. I think on the eastern side, we probably do need to be a little bit clear about what we want to do over there.
We added that, didn't we add that gazebo overlook?
Yeah, we added that gazebo overlook, but yeah, I think we need to make that a little bit more explicit or clear. So obviously it wasn't explicit or clear. So we can, we can look at that. So I, I do think, again, we, we lost thirty units in the process, which was effectively that central village. And so the amenity we had associated with that central village, if you will, is the one thing that did come off the plan because those, those units came off the plan as well.
There is units where the pool was.
No, that was just a tennis court over there.
Oh, well, I think there's units there now, whatever it was.
No, that was in the central community area, which has gone altogether.
Okay. All right. The last thing we need to do is have you extend the time clock? So I don't know. Sixty days at least to get things produced and to go through a lot of this stuff.
Yes, I think that makes sense. We, we will, and I, I can submit this in writing additionally, but I can state for the, for the record that tonight, we, we would extend the board's time for action on this. Why don't we say, you know, sixty-five days to make sure it gets passed two more meetings, you know, with the expectation that it would be further extended in increments as we work cooperatively through this process.
I'm, I was looking at April twentieth, which is a Wednesday. So if we needed to have two meetings that month, or if you were on the third one of that month, we did, that would be available. I hope that's agreeable, April twentieth?
Sounds, that sounds fine.
That's basically two, it's okay. So is there a motion to extend the time clock to April twentieth?
Rosemary, here, I'll make that motion to extend it till April twentieth.
Second.
Was that Stu? Okay.
Yes.
Not a motion?
Sorry. So was that to extend the time clock to April twentieth or for a meeting on April twentieth?
No, it's the time clock.
Time clock.
Continue the meeting. Yep. So that's the time clock, the April twentieth. All right. The first and the second. So we'll do the vote. Stu?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Janice?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
And Amanda?
Yes, but I just want to say that if there was two meetings, I probably wouldn't be able to attend the second one in April. I'll be out of town.
Okay, we'll probably do either or. I don't think, I don't know if we'll do two meetings in a month. Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay. All right, we'll do that. And then last thing we need to do night is then continue the public hearing. So I don't know when you think you might have some of this information for us that we can go forward and make it productive?
Yeah, my, my thinking is we should probably go to, to the early April meeting. I'm not sure we'd have. I don't want to keep doing this over and over again. You know, I think if we just went thirty days out, we'd find ourselves extending it further. So I think
You need to have the stuff to us in two weeks. Yeah, you know, it's like two weeks. Right. So that would be April fifth, I believe, is the Tuesday. Just make sure that's not, yeah. Okay, so April fifth? Or no? Yeah, April fifth. Okay. So that gives you a good six weeks to get some of these things for us, whether it's reports or site plans or architectural plans. So if you can, we'd like to have it two weeks before the meeting so we can get it distributed. If you've got anything that, that our engineer needs to review, if you can get it to us as soon as possible because she needs, you know, probably a good two or three weeks lead time to get it reviewed. So. Okay, so we're continuing, a motion to continue the public hearing to April fifth.
So moved from Rosemary.
Okay.
Second.
Let's do, okay, motion second to continue this at April fifth. So, Stu?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Janice?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Christine?
Yeah.
Rosemary?
Yes.
And Amanda?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, thank you.
So Susan, before they go, you mentioned, you mentioned the possibility of, of a peer review for environmental, other than the wetlands. And I mentioned the possibility of a peer review for traffic. Do we have enough money in, in the, in the fund, which I believe has been set up as an escrow of the money that the developer paid to us way back when it was like ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars? Do we have enough funds left so that we can go out and hire somebody to do a peer review of those two very important issues? I I don't know how I can make positive findings given the human health and safety aspects of traffic circulation without getting another opinion on the traffic. So Susan.
I think I'm going to leave that with Jennifer when she comes back and she can meet with Bill or whatever to talk about some of these other reviews. And then I'm not sure how to proceed with it in April, but we didn't agree to anything tonight. So I think that's something that Jennifer can communicate with Mr. Landry going forward when she returns. I think maybe there's enough, there's some other things that we can talk, actually do before then. Like the architectural, the landscaping, the lighting, maybe we can tackle those first while we're trying to get the other things done.
Do the easy ones first. I agree.
Yeah, that'd be good. So I, you know, and, and that would give them more lead time. If we're going to have to get some of this other stuff done. So I think I'll leave that in Jennifer's hands or lap, whichever. To work, to work through the, the specifics of that when she comes back. I think, I know she may be coming back to work remotely in another week or so. That's the, the last that I've heard. So. And that's all. So thank you very much, everyone.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Susan, this is Rick Rogers, DPW. Do you need me to, hi, do you need me to stay for anything now?
No, no, but at least, yeah, it was good for you to hear. And actually Kelly too, I mean, I think it was good for you to listen to all this, but I think, you know, until we get specifics for you to review and have input. Because we'll need you to sign off on things as well. So.
Okay.
I think we're all, yeah, we're good for you guys tonight. Thanks.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
All right, night, Rick. Thank you, Kelly.
Susan, before we go on, may I just ask a clarifying question that I think is primarily for Todd, although maybe others may know. On the issue that was raised regarding stress on our school system. Is this just an area and, and I don't think it's at all equitable for it to be tied simply to affordable housing, but just setting that aside for a minute. Anything that we consider like fire safety, traffic, environmental, th- this is a concern of stress on our infrastructure. And I'm just wondering, and, and as Stu clearly pointed out, the whole town has the potential to grow exponentially. And so is there, has there been, are there community standards in place? And where, where do they coincide around that kind of, I mean, do we consult with the school department to understand what it has specked out in its strategic plan about what capacity limits are? How, how do we as a planning board and a town faced with exponential growth enter that question? Because it is a serious question to be considered. I mean, if there are, wh- what's the threshold that triggers the development of a new school? And how do we account for that? And, and with all of the residential developments that are being considered, it's, it's got to be a factor, but I don't know. And I haven't read anything or seen anything, and I don't know that it's even within our jurisdiction. But it seems to me that it's a stress point that there should be some way to understand, have counsel from folks who are thinking about those issues. So that we're not just going down this path where we're creating a mess. And I think those were the majority of the questions that, that people are asking, whether they're informed or not, they are important questions. So I'm just wondering, how do we address that?
I'll, I'll mention it first and then Todd can, can say when he wants. So when, on part of the checklist, it has in the back, on the last sheet, it has all the other departments and municipal it goes to, and now the master plan was submitted to the school department. They did offer testimony as far as their capacity in their schools. Whether we were allowed to take that into consideration, that's the Todd question, but they did present us that information. I have asked Ed to forward this, this preliminary plan packet to the school superintendent. Whether their, their attorney or the superintendent wants to come and offer testimony as to school capacities. But it's just a matter of getting the information to them and including them in the process. And then it becomes a question. Is that a reasonable thing that we can consider? Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. So I don't know, Todd, do you have any more to say?
That was excellent, Susan. But at the end of the day, all you can rely on is competent evidence. That's what every decision has to be based upon. No matter what your application is, right? So if you have competent evidence being testimony from a superintendent, for example, about the stress on the school. And if your affordable housing plan, your, your comprehensive, your comprehensive plan, discuss those items and how they should be considered in your decisions, then you can certainly consider them. Makes sense?
I guess the hard part about that is that you, we're just guessing how many kids are going to be there. You know, it's like, it's not saying three hundred have moved in. You're saying, well, this is a capacity, but at what point? I mean, I, I don't know. I would just think that would be the, the devil's advocate argument. It's like, how can you say, because they have presented a master plan. You know, other large developments and how many kids were in those developments. So I don't know if we should be talking about this, but
Not talking about a particular plan right now. You're talking about plans in general.
Yeah, I think that's what you have to do is find out what the capacities are. And like I said, then have testimony.
It has to be competent.
We need to make sure that.
Go ahead.
We need to make sure that, I'm sorry, we need to make sure that it's not putting a strain just on the capacity of the school, but the children's learning as well. You get so many children packed into a classroom. The teacher's got to try to teach each and every one of those children. I mean, it just, it seems like the strain on, on the children's learning is, is, is going to be a factor as well.
I was reading something, I don't know if it's part of this packet that cited the, the teacher to student ratio. Wow, I was reading something, I don't know if it's part of this packet that cited the the teacher to student ratio. For the different schools and the different levels, and Tiverton is actually below the state average. The average is fourteen to one, and the number of the the levels were nine to one, twelve to one, you know, so I don't know.
I I don't want this to go too far, but off our agenda, that that's all.
Right, right, so I think, yeah, that's something you know, you can discuss further. Um, I don't know if it would be a specific agenda item to go with, or it's just a matter of getting the school department involved in in this petition, but. That's where you go with it, I guess.
No, I I think that's important, and just that these things be taken as as a whole, because there are, as Stu pointed out, multiple developments, so. Um, you know, if if in fact we're reaching out to the superintendent and including them in conversations and um. And they are providing that information, I think it's important information that we have access to.
Yeah, so I think Ed will get, if he hasn't already, he'll get the plan set, all the information to to the superintendent, I think, so that we go to. Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone, I know it's a lot, a lot long, I feel like I'm going to break the solar all over again.
I just want a quick question, I apologize. Um, so I know we had talked about, um, kinda, because I'm thinking of the location of 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 this um proposal. And I'm thinking of the other side of it is.
Are we talking about a specific proposal right now?
Uh, well, Ed, the couple of proposals around Souza Road area. Um, so I'm just worried about, because there's all, I I know the other side of all of the Souza Road area and stuff, isn't that all highway? And I I I remember you guys saying something about blasting, so would that have, uh, would that negatively affect? I'm just wondering, I'm just talking out loud, and just kind of trying to figure things out. Uh, would that negatively affect the uh the rocks from falling down on on the highway over there with with any of that? I wasn't sure if the blasting was gonna be anywhere near that area, or?
Yeah, that's not appropriate to talk about right now, we can bring that up.
My apologies.
No, it's not a problem.
I was just thinking about it, I I I just wasn't clear on it, I guess I should have brought it up earlier, my apologies.
Well, you, we will have plenty of hearings, I'm sure, on this matter.
We brought up as part of the public hearing, I guess, as a discussion, so everybody can hear what what the discussion is.
It's a great question, though, so write it down.
Okay, we'll do.
Forget it, okay. Moving along, uh, Tiverton Planning Board approval of minutes, we have the November second, November sixteen, December seven. January eleven, and February first. Um, you know, this is, it's a tough, tough thing, I mean, Ed didn't come on board until after January eleventh meeting, I know he did the January eleventh minutes, and that's what we have here tonight. Um, to to approve, but the other ones are still outstanding, so I'm not sure what what's gonna happen with those when Jennifer returns, because he wasn't an employee at the time. So anyway, he's working on them, so I um, the February or January eleventh, twenty twenty-two minutes, anybody have comments or edits they want to make? And the only thing I had that I mentioned to him earlier is is to include Peter in the first paragraph as a as a member. You know, even though he came in late, he should be included in the top so that he's, because he's included in all the votes, I'll just make that one change. It was nice, it was six pages, so it was good, so um, is there a minute motion, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, I'll make that motion. Approve the minutes of uh January eleven, two thousand and twenty-two.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
The motion, Rosemary second.
Okay, okay, the motion and a second to approve the minutes, those in favor, let's go around the room, we'll start with Amanda.
Yes.
Rosemary?
Yes.
Uh, Christine?
Yeah.
Uh, Peter?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Stu?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah. I think, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Christine and Amanda, you weren't here, I always forget to look at that, I was trying to find it, you were absent, so you can't be um. You can't be part of the vote, you can't vote a minute, you weren't present for, so do we still have five, one, two, three, four, oh, we only have four. One, two, three, four, because Adam's gone, kind of.
Sorry, I thought I was there, my apologies.
Yeah, well, yeah, I know, you're missing, um. So what do you want to do, Todd?
Hold it until March.
Okay, okay, I guess we have to hold off on those till, well. Actually, you know, the thing is, the thing I read the last time after we went round robin about this was that you have to have. A a majority of the present body for some major subdivisions. Major land development approvals or subdivisions, or I mean, any subdivision approval, but for all the administrative stuff, you don't need a majority of the full body. Have you ever read that? I've read that, and I know we've done that before, not done it.
Okay.
You know, just, I I think it reads as the members present, a majority of the members present, not that it has to be a majority of the full body.
For administrative purposes.
For all the administrative votes, yeah, it's only subdivision approvals that require a majority of the. Majority of the the full body of the nine, yeah, so that would always take five. We have, I want to, I don't know, one, two, one, two. One, two, there's four of us, four of us out of.
Five of us aren't there.
Hi.
We got five?
Oh, because Peter, yeah.
Yeah.
There's five of us.
Oh, there, oh, yeah, there is five, sorry, Peter, I was looking at the top line, oh, that's good, okay, never mind, we're good, did I ask everybody?
Yes.
Okay, oh, good, okay, sorry, I was looking back at the four, okay. Um, so actually, it's five approved, because Amanda and Christine were present, okay. About that, all right, and now we've already done the. We've got plans, and and we've done the appointment to the Solar Committee. Um. Okay, so my item is the planning board annual report, and that goes to the town council, so it's supposed to be done by every board and commission annually. So I'm trying to do it around January, and I think everybody has it in their packet, it's just, it's a summary of. Who was on the board, um, what the board did, the plans and all that, so that's what that is, the summary of that, and I think I also um have included, I think you have that, is the. The status of like subdivisions um in town, I don't know, I think the council likes to keep track of that, like how many people potentially could be in the town based on the subdivisions that are under development. Or recently approved, that kind of thing, so I think that attachment's there, so. Um, that will get forwarded to the council's agenda for their information. They can do what they will. Um, okay. So the last item is the election of officers for vote for chairman and vice chairman. Um, I think we're gonna postpone this, I talked to Stu this morning, because I have information, well, I just have something to tell everybody, this is my last meeting. Um, I am moving out of Tiverton by the end of March, so I'm leaving you guys high and dry.
You'll be with us on March first, though.
No, I won't, I won't be attending the March meeting, this is my last meeting. It's all, I mean, we've been trying to sell our house for five years, and it's all happened very quick. We don't even have a place to really move to, we're moving into a rental, but um, we had to take the opportunity, um, we have a buyer for our house, so. Um, I think I asked Stu if I could stay on as chairman um for a few more weeks, just because Brayton Solar is getting ready to um record their plans. And Todd has written the decision that I need to sign, and I can only do that as chairman. So I just ask if I could complete those tasks to tie that all up before um. Now, I do that, and then Stu will, as vice chairman, start the meeting on March first. And then you'll elect your chairman and vice chairman at that meeting, so. Well, I've enjoyed my time here.
So Susan, you have, you have done an enormous amount of work, you have volunteered to do the AO job. For months and months and months, and you've done that on two occasions. Um, and nothing, and while you were AO, nothing slipped through the crack. Um, everything, everything was done properly, everything was done on time. Uh, the minutes were updated, you did, you did your monthly reports. Uh, um, I I don't know how we're going to get by without you, and with all the volunteer work you do.
You will.
If you want me to run the March meeting in my capacity as vice chair, the March meeting is two weeks from now. It's very early, it's March one.
Right now, it's just one.
So I'm gonna ask Todd and Ed if I can email them tomorrow and and get their um views on what they think need to be on the agenda, or what's ready to be on the agenda.
Right now, right now, it's just the born mill approving the amended final plan.
Right now, it's just born.
And and I've looked through it, and I had just a couple of comments that I'll give you that they need to change for the milars, so um, it's ready to be, and and Jennifer's written the decision. So it'll be ready to go, just be, you'll be signing it when when they submit the milars, but so far, that's the only thing on the agenda, I believe, and if Ed can crank out more minutes. He's always welcome to do that, but I mean, it's tough, it's it's tough, it's.
It's not fair to Ed, to ask him to do minutes i- i- uh for meetings that he wasn't even at.
Well, he wasn't even employed here yet, yeah, so that's what's what's kind of tough, but hopefully Jennifer will be back in a week or so. Um, she'll be working remote, but she will be a resource. You know, I'll be around for a couple more weeks for Ed to, but I have to start packing up my house, throwing things out and packing up, so I just. I thought maybe I could hang in there till the March meeting, but I just have too much to do, that I have to focus on that. So I've enjoyed my time. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I'm I haven't figured out yet how much I'll miss it, if I'll miss it, probably will, but it's been nice to meet all of you, it's been nice to meet all of you.
Well, we'll certainly miss you.
Yeah, good, well, I talk a lot, I know, so, so anyway, I just encourage everybody to um ask lots of questions. Don't, don't give in to these guys, you know, stand your ground, stand your ground, so.
I wasn't that learning from you, though.
Oh, well, just read the subdivision regs, that's why I always say, go to those, that's that's what Kate told me when she left. Everything you need to know is in the subdivision regulations and zoning, so, you know, just go to that. But you guys will make it, you got Todd, he knows what he's doing, so that'll be good, all right? So the next scheduled meeting is March first, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Was that Peter, okay, all right, thank you.
Second.
All right, March. Okay, all set, thank you, at eight fifty-four.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thanks.